Okay, thank you and welcome to the July 16th, 2024 Angels Camp City Council Meeting. Roll call page, Rose.
Mayor Hernan.
Present.
Vice Mayor Moncada is absent. Councilmember Brolio.
Present.
Councilmember Shemante.
Present.
Councilmember Schirato.
Present.
Staff is present.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We are going to go back into closed session at the end of tonight's meeting, so I don't have anything to report on in closed session. But what I do have is... Item 7. We're looking for... I'm sorry?
Approval.
Trying to do this one here. Approval of the agenda as posted, or if anyone has any amendments?
Steve, do you have any amendments?
I do not, thank you.
Any members of the public? We have some folks with us online. Seeing none, looking for approval. Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Rose.
Shemante.
Aye.
Brolio.
Aye.
Hernan.
Aye.
Schirato.
Aye.
Thank you.
Public comment: The public may address the council on any item of public interest not otherwise on the agenda that is referred, that is within the jurisdiction of the city. No action may be taken. Matters to be addressed may be referred to city staff or placed on a subsequent meeting agenda, and speakers will be limited to five minutes per person. Do we have any public comment tonight? Seeing none, we will close public comment. We will move on to item 9, which is our consent agenda. We have four items on consent. How does everybody feel about our consent? Anyone?
I want to pull D, please.
Okay, item D being pulled. Any other items? Any public needing to pull any items off of consent? Seeing none, I would like to come back and hear a motion for items A, B, and C. I have a motion.
Second.
And a second, Rose.
Shemante.
Aye.
Brolio.
Aye.
Hernan.
Aye.
Schirato.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, Alvin, you pulled item D?
I did.
Would you like to speak to that?
I will. So for item D, I just... I forgot to ask you, how much is left in there? For that we set aside for that UTICA part?
For the UTICA part. So we set aside $400,000, and we spent $60,000 so far of those funds.
Okay.
And so now with this additional 100, it's $250,000 that we have spent. What, this change order then?
This change order.
So we have about $150,000 left.
We're made.
$147,000. So I just wanted, I just wanted to say that, I mean, I'm all for the bathrooms. I think that was a great addition. I know that this is something we had to do at Foyer. I just want to be really conscious that we only have $147,000 left for change orders in that UTICA part expansion project. So that's my only thing I wanted to say. And the other thing was, and I'm not sure about this either, but on consent agenda, putting $200,000, should that have... I mean, that's just a lot of money.
It's not, no, it actually had...
I know, we had it last time, I know.
But it was the wrong wording.
I know, it was wrong wording, I know. And that's, I get why it's...
That's why.
What's that?
Sort of the wrong wording.
I know.
I didn't put the dumb form on there.
I know, and I understand.
Honestly, the motion was not made to spend these monies.
Right.
So if you look at the minutes, it was just clear direction as far as what to do. No money spent.
No money spent. And that's what I'm saying, I get why it's there. It's just a lot of money to be in concession. That was my only comment.
I think the optics would be, and I agree with you, Caroline, you know, I was going to ask if we didn't pull it, for the mayor to say why it's on the consent agenda, because it's not a routine item, so...
Correct. And then I would like to just state, I think the direction that was given was to be sure and pay on actuals for all of this work. So it's not a just blanket amount of money could be spent. It is, it is when those bills come in, when the invoices come in, they should be all itemized and definable and actual items. So if there's less concrete being used, or less footage of fence, or whatever, it would be a lesser amount than this, but not to exceed this. Does that, does that seem reasonable to you, Vinnie?
Mm-hmm.
So maybe it won't be quite so much.
Pass that. I'll make the motion to approve D unless anybody has anything else.
Second.
Shemante.
Aye.
Brolio.
Aye.
Hernan.
Aye.
Schirato.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, that is our consent agenda. Now moving on to our regular agenda, item 10A, the water rate study, water rate study presentation. Michelle.
Yes.
So we have our consultants online with us. They're going to give us the presentation. There's Michael from Barto Wells. They were the consultants we heard to do our Prop 218 water rate study. And there's Wana.
Leading, doing this. So I have a presentation to share, and hopefully you can all see this.
Can, can, is it this specific one?
Uh, yes, that's, that's the one.
Okay.
So my name is Michael DeGroot, and I'm Vice President of Barto Wells. And I also have with me Wana Espinoza, who's a consultant working on this project. Next slide. So this is an overview of the presentation, and I'm going to discuss the legal requirements for your water and sewer rates, which is Proposition 218. Go over some water enterprise background information, and then discuss the water bill impacts and rate survey. And then I think after the water section's done, I'll take feedback on, on water. And then we also have the wastewater background and wastewater bill impacts and rate survey. Next slide. So these are the legal requirements for your rates, and there's procedural as well as substantive requirements. The procedural requirements are that you must mail a notice of the proposed rate increase to all affected property owners, and you must hold a public hearing prior to adopting the proposed rate increase, not less than 45 days after the required notices are mailed. And with the substantive requirements, the amount of the fee or charge levied on any customer shall not exceed the proportional cost of service attributable to the customer. Revenues derived from the fee or charge cannot exceed the funds required to provide the service, and revenues derived from the fee or charge can only be used for the purpose for which the fee was imposed. So you're not allowed to make a profit on the water sewer rates, and they need to be used for the service for which they're collected. Next slide. So this is some background of your water enterprise. Your water supply is provided through a joint powers agreement, or JPA, between the City of Angels and Union Public Utility District, and the JPA is known as the UTICA Water and Power Authority, or UWPA, and has served the city and its partner agencies since 1995. The water system is self-supporting and includes water supply, treatment, storage, as well as distribution facilities. Next slide. So this is a summary of the findings of the study. We looked at what your sources of revenue were, and you have rate revenues, revenue from connection fees, as well as financial reserves, and the potential to get grants. And then on the cost side, you have ongoing JPA obligations. We're projecting 5% cost increases on O&M, as well as about $1.8 million a year in operating maintenance expenses. And then you have a five-year capital improvement program of about $16 million. Next slide. So these are your current monthly water rates, and it consists of two components. There's a volumetric charge on all usage, which is $1.69 per 100 cubic foot, and 100 cubic foot is about 748 gallons. And then in addition to that, you have a fixed charge, which varies based on the size of the meter. So larger meters pay proportionately more based on their maximum capacity in the system. And so you can see that you've got a meter charge of $46.93 per month for the 5'8" meter, and then you've got the UWPA fee of $13.91, and that pays for your proportionate share of the JPA expenses. So the total fixed charge per month for the 5'8" meter is $60.84, and you can see that larger meters pay proportionally more based on the size of the meter. Next slide. So this slide shows your five-year water capital improvement program and funding sources. And so you can see you've got about $2.6 million in the first year, '24, '25, and all that's pay-as-you-go. And then you've got about $3.7 million in the next year, and we're looking at grants for part of that, about $3.3 million. And then in '26, '27, there's another about $3.7 million with about $3.3 million of grants, and so, and so on. It's a little bit hard for me to read this slide here. So next year is about $3.6 million, and then $2.3 million in year five. Next slide. So these are the proposed monthly water rates, and what we're recommending is a 5% annual increase, and we think you're in good shape financially, and it's on both water and wastewater. So it's looking like you can skip this year currently, which is the '24, '25 year, and start implementing these rates on July 1st of 2025. And so you can see we're recommending 5% overall rate increases to your current structure for water. And so the volumetric rate would go from $1.69 to $1.77 in the first year, up to $2.15 in year five. And then the fixed charge for the 5'8", would go from $46.93 to $49.28 in year one, up to $59.90. Next slide. So there's two options for the UWPA charge that we're presenting. This first option would be actually a reduction in this current '24, '25 year to the actual amount of your contribution, which is $370,000. And then we're looking at 10% increases on that contribution amount each year up to '28, '29. So your contribution will be $407,000 in '25, '26, up to $541,000 in '28, '29. And so this option one would just match those expenses exactly, and you would see a slight reduction in the first year, and then 10% increases. Next slide. Option two would be to phase in the UWPA rates, and so essentially you would not have any change to that rate in '24, '25, and then you'd be looking at 6.22% increases each year up to 2028, '29. And so under this scenario, you would be able to accumulate a little bit more reserves in that UWPA fund. Next slide. And so this is the summary of the two options, and you can see the reserve balance would stay at the current level, which is about $343,000 under option one. And option two, you would see an increase from $343,000 up to $486,000. Next slide. And this shows you graphically what the contribution amounts would be under each scenario. So option one, you could see the dark blue line is decreasing in the first year, and then gradually phasing up. And then option two is the light blue line is just gradually increasing through the five years. Next slide. And this is what the reserve balance would look like. So option one is the dark blue line, and it would just stay flat at $343,000. And then option two, it would increase up to about $486,000 in '27, '28. Next slide. And so this shows you the bill impacts of the two options, along with the 5% increases. So your current bill for the typical residential user using 1,100 cubic feet per month is $79.43, and under option one, you could reduce that to $77.82 this fiscal year, and then that would go to 82.06 in '25, '26, and gradually up to 102.15 in year five. And under option two, that $79.43 would stay the same in this year, and then go to 83.53 in '25, '26, and then up to 102.15 in year five. Next slide. So we conducted a regional rate survey, looking at how your rates compared to neighboring agencies, and the average for the region was about $89.54 per month for a typical single-family home using 1,100 cubic feet per month. And you can see the dark blue is the fixed charges, and the light blue is the usage charges. And so you're currently at $79.43, so you're below the average for the region, and you can see under option one, that would go to 77.62. And so that's it for water, and so I'd like to answer any questions or any comments?
I have a question, and I don't know if this is for, I don't know who it's for in the room. So if we were to change the rate for '24, '25, since we already started our '24, '25 budget, we're already in that cycle, can, do we just change it for the next billing cycle, or how does that work? I'm looking at Michelle, because I don't know who to ask that to.
So it would be after this passes, so you'd have to have the 45 years after your notice is sent out, and then after the council meeting, then you would decide the date. So usually it's at the first of, or I think it's like the 20th of the month, because that's when we do the next billing cycle.
Do you have to do the notice if it goes down?
No, you don't. So you can always charge less than the notice rate, as long as it's proportional.
But do you, Mike, do you have to communicate that in your notice that you're charging less than a maximum? I worry a little bit about... Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we defer to your legal counsel on this. You know, we're not legal experts, but in our experience, there's no notice required to charge less than the, the notice rate, but we defer to your attorney on that.
So when you look at the average family where we are now, at about $187, that's going to go to 221, which is $33, almost $34 a month, which equates to about $107 a year or more for our, and that's, and that's just water. So I wonder, I, I don't know if, if I can support that kind of increase for our, our folks, and I need to know what the consequences would be if we couldn't, if we don't do that. And then I want to go back to how we pay the contribution to UTICA. So what are, what are the downs, the downside if we don't, if we don't increase it by this amount?
So I think for water, if you don't increase it by this amount, then you're going to really be looking at missing potentially debt service coverage and not being able to execute your capital improvement program. That's definitely a risk.
And so, but, but we could do anything between zero and the 5% increase, correct, Mike?
Yes, so you have complete authority in terms of, you know, what you ultimately do here.
I got your word.
But in terms of, you know, the revenue requirements that are factored into the study, you would not be able to fund all the expenses that we have in our study.
And then with, with UTICA, I'm sorry.
Keep going.
Yeah, so with UTICA, we have a reserve that only, that, that's only can be used for, for the UTICA JPA. And, you know, I, I'm proposing that we keep the rate the same and spend down $134,000 of the reserve, so that covers the outer years, but then doesn't impact our current rate to our ratepayers.
Yeah, that's definitely an option that we can look at on, you know, in terms of the scenarios, is spending down that reserve. I think it's not necessarily an option you'd recommend just in case in the next five-year period, they really increase the rate on you. Let's say it goes up, you know, a lot, then you wouldn't have that buffer to phase in the next set of rates, but it's possible to use it up now.
But I think what we're facing right now is, and we have Joel Metzger in the audience, what we're facing is, we're trying to get an exemption from, from FERC right now for our powerhouses. And right now, the JPA has set it aside around $400,000 for that. So, you know, if, if this is successful, then there's going to be $400,000 that can be infused back in to the budget, you know? And, and if it's not successful, then I think we're all going to be having some conversations, tough conversations about, you know, where we're going to move forward. So I, I understand the need to raise money. I also want to be respectful of our citizens and make sure that it's going to be manageable for them. You know, I, I, I understand that there's a cost of living expense, Mike, and I, you know, can we factor that in? I did a 2% increase, and I did a spreadsheet, you know, similar to that, but it lessened the overall impact. I mean, I worry about our retirees who may not begin in a cost of living every year, and, you know, how is this going to impact them?
Which part are you referring to, the 2%?
Oh, I, I, I did a 2% spreadsheet.
Here's a 10% scenario and a 6.22. You kind of did your own.
I did my own of 2%.
Because what has been our increases for the last four years? They've been anywhere from 2% to 3%, and in some years, we didn't raise at all, correct, Alvin? We had the opportunity to kind of save during one?
I think we raised all years, and we took the average. We took the median of a water year three, and we had a sliding scale where we could move it if we wanted to.
If you want to. So is it the same with this?
And I don't know what that percentage was. I don't remember what that percentage was.
But they were very mediocre, I think is my point, if not, not...
I think that first year after this last rate study, it was kind of a good jump.
It was a good jump. It went down the first year.
Yeah.
It went down the first year, and then it jumped, and the increases got larger as it went along. Without looking at it, I'm not 100% positive, but it's a pretty good jump the last part of this.
If you're looking at 2% across, you're not, that's not UWPA, you're taking that out of it.
I just, I left, for the next five years, I left it at $13.91 in the stuff that I did, because I wanted to use the reserve, $134,000 of the reserve.
Oh, you wanted to tap into the reserve?
Right.
For the water part?
For the, for our contribution part.
For the contribution part?
Right.
Because the contribution, the five-year contribution, it doesn't really change. It goes, you know, year '27, '28, it's $9.85 for the two of us, and then $1,083 the next year, so I just want to make sure we have enough money.
Right. Well, we would, we would, yeah. I, what I did was...
And not completely tap it out, because we have possible...
No, we, but Michelle, Michelle, we collect for year, for '25, '26, our contribution is going to be $407,000, correct? And according to the study, we, we, we collect $407,607. And so for '25, '26, at $13.91, we're going to cover that collection, that debt. So what we need to look at is the difference, you know, for the next three years. In one year is $40,000, the next is $44,000, the next one is $49,000, and adds up to $134,717. And we have a reserve, and because next year is going to be $370, if we stay at $390, whatever our current, we're going to build that reserve. So, you know, my sense is that we still have almost $200,000 left in the reserve.
Correct, and we also have to take into account the reserve balance they're starting with, or the audited numbers as of 2023. We have this year, we did bring in more in rate revenue versus the contribution, but remember the contribution was $490 in '22, and then it went down to $290. So we're going to probably have $75,000 to $100,000 extra that builds to that.
So that reserve...
But you have that to also think about.
Because that number that the 3.43 that it was going off of was the last audited.
Was the last audited.
So that was my question that I asked me today today. So the, so what we, and what we closed the year with was probably close to 4.50-ish?
No, it's 4.06.
It's 4.06. So it is 4.06 that we ended the year with.
And we had some interest. A little bit.
So, okay.
I'll stop now.
No, it's good, you're good.
So, Mikey, is there, you have two scenarios here. Is there an opportunity, are you looking for feedback on the water tonight for us to give you a third to go back to the drawing board and do another more, less sizable increase?
Yeah, I think this is, it's meant to be kind of, you know, more of an informal workshop where we're getting your feedback.
Yeah.
And if you were comfortable with the scenarios, then we could move forward with the noticing, but if not, we can always come back.
Well, I mean, I, I would rather not raise rates the first year at all, even if we go...
And that's what they're proposing.
Yeah.
So we would have to do any notices, right?
Right.
So...
Like this?
All right, you want me to go?
Yes.
So for me, I think I like the option one, with the, it goes down 9.23% this year, we're '24, '25, and then we keep up with the 10% annual contribution. We have projects that are finally started and gone to bid, and, and those water and sewer rate projects are going to happen now at this point.
This is, this, this slide though is with UTICA.
UW.
Right, and I know, I'm just saying, as an overall, because we're raising our rates too.
Right.
And UTICA's on its own thing there too, and I'll go to that in a second. But I'm fine with raising our rates, because we are going to start some projects, I hope, right? I mean, we have Booster Way, we have things that we're actually going to start, and start spending money. And Michael has built in those CIP projects over the next five years for our side of our rate increase. For the UTICA side, I, I'm good with this. I'm good with either one, because I see a lot of stuff happening at UTICA, and I don't want to hedge my bet on if FERC passes. We'll revisit it. If we have $400,000 in a reserve account and it doesn't pass, then we have the opportunity maybe to get a loan, we have money to back things up, to stretch things out. We could then, in five years, put more of that money into the reserves. I mean, I want to spend it, don't get me wrong. I don't want to hold $500,000 of somebody's money on the, but we could fund CIP projects, we could do things down the road with that, so...
But we can't do that without our partner.
Well, I don't know what our partner is doing at the moment, but I don't either. But all I know is to have a little money in the bank account is not a bad thing either. And if we want to spend part of it down the road, that's fine too.
I don't, I do not want to collect too much, mentally.
Right, I'm good with...
I think that both of these scenarios do collect a little bit too much for us, and it's on the skin of our, of our ratepayers backs, and our fixed income, and our elderly, and I would like to be more...
Do you go back up? I'm good with this. Rates go down, and, and because of our, our, even our CIP project, I don't know.
That's just UTICA.
Right, that's just UTICA. No, that's, that's, because, because the UTICA is also a 10% increase that keeps up with what they're doing over the next five years. It's what we disapproved at that JPA meeting, right? Or what we are proposing.
But, but we can get there without, with some, using some of our reserves, without impacting our current, our next year's rate, or our next five-year rate with increasing...
Because we have already over-collected.
Right, because we have over-collected.
Already over-collected.
So Michael, or, well, we don't have a lawyer here, at some point, could we, if FERC passes, if FERC passes, could we then, as a board, decide to spend that reserve on those water bills and, and, and lower their rates? Could, could we offset it on our home down the road? Does that make sense?
I think you could always do that.
You just, yeah, you just like how we each year decided if we were going to raise the rates a small amount or which amount we were up to.
Could we spend down that, that, that reserve on the UTICA rate?
Probably Michael's...
Sorry, Michael, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, that's my belief that you can. I don't think you're, our contract should be obligated to hold a reserve.
Just the FERC thinks, cares not having money there if it doesn't pass.
If it doesn't pass, that's going to be a great conversation.
Right, and then, I mean, we now have a reserve fund to, to leverage with. And if it, if it does pass, then that's a whole other conversation too. And, and if it, if it does pass, then that's a whole other conversation too.
Jim or Caroline, what are your, what are your thoughts?
My, my question is, although I agree with Alvin that we've seen some projects happening and we're, we're moving and we're shaking, but I don't, I don't know that we're going to deliver a $16 million CIP here at the City of Angels in five years. I think we've talked about it. We do have some things in our forecast, but I don't think we're going to, I don't think $16 million is likely. I don't think we've seen that CIP plan to approve, have we?
You have.
Yeah.
16 was in the budget.
But 16 million, I don't think it's going to come in.
It was partially grant funded.
The grant funding is, the grant funding is, is a big portion of that.
That would be the caveat.
Go back, there's the slide that has the...
Which one?
Uh, go up. Keep going, keep going. You have the blue line. It was the one he said that was under...
It's like 28.
Here, those are your two grant funding sources there for, what is that, three and a half mil and three and a half mil? So seven million has to be grant funded in those two years of your 16 million that you're going to collect?
So, yeah, that's for me. But Caroline?
Oh, that's a big pill to swallow. So just looking at the option one again, um, I have to get out of this, sorry, I got to get out of the UWPA slide, um, the monthly water rate. Okay, so looking at, um, holding steady or even lower rate is where I would be at for the first year. I just, um...
I'm trying to figure out where we're talking.
We just proposed... Yeah, I, I, um, I guess you've taken everything into consideration, our wages, wages going up, um, all the things that you need to run your water plant and things like that. So I, I don't know how we would be able to only do a 2% on the water. Is that what you're proposing?
I, I think we have to look at it holistically. What are we, what are our goals for water, wastewater? And, you know, and what's, what's the appetite out there? I mean, I, I saw one of the charts where we're going to be charging more than CCWD. I mean, CCWD took a lot of heat for not taking into consideration their contingent, contingency or their constituents. Um, Mike, could you do, um...
I don't think any of the three scenarios proposed, option one, Angels Camp, or option two.
It was the total between water, wastewater and Utica.
Oh, is that, okay.
So when we come to all three, we were higher than some groups.
Yeah. So, Mike, what would be the downfall of ratcheting that percentage up if we stayed at zero and then we went, you know, could we go like two, two and a half, three, four, and then end up at five and not, not have it be so painful?
Yeah, I, I could take a look at lowering that increase and using some more of the reserves that you have. But one thing to keep in mind is that we've, we're projecting debt service in your financial plan, and you need to keep what's called a debt service coverage covenant. So you need to collect net revenues at least 1.25x typically your annual debt service. And so that, you know, we can kind of adjust the numbers to see, you know, what's reasonable there.
I do think, I think you're on the right path on the, the Utica reserves, and that's going to lessen the hit overall when you add up water and wastewater. Because wastewater, I mean, the two, the two of those together, the hit is, is pretty high. We can lessen the impact by kind of bringing some reserves in. That might be helpful. Um, something else, but I lost my... Oh, are we allowed, and we don't have our lawyer here, um, to use enterprise funds that we've got already in the pot to offset some of these costs? Because we've already collected them, I don't know.
I think that's what Michael was speaking about. He'd have to do the analysis. We have to dip into our reserves, but you're running into the...
But they've taken our reserves into...
They're going to want to look at what you're collecting, and then we may fall below, and then we would...
What's, what's our current debt service, Mike? Do you know?
Uh, yeah, let me double check that. So, um, it looks like for water, you don't have debt. But with those, we're projecting actually a loan for some of your CIP, and that would be about 600,000 a year, based on our estimates. So currently no debt, but we're projecting 600,000 a year.
So we have to have about seven, we're, we should collect at about $700,000 a year, based on what you said.
Right.
And so if, if, if we were to set, if we were to say $700,000 is our target, does it have to be that 5% increase to get to that $700,000?
I think you, you could lower the total borrowing by using reserves. And so I think you could, you know, work around that.
Do we need to continue on and talk about wastewater?
Yeah.
Michael, would you like to continue on in your presentation and talk about wastewater now? I know we can't, we may have worked water pretty hard, but maybe we could come back to it if we need to.
Okay. So here's the background on your wastewater enterprise. It's self-supporting, and the major activities include collection, storage, treatment, and disposal. And the city operates at the wastewater treatment facility, holding ponds, lift stations, maintains effluent lines that provide secondary and tertiary wastewater for irrigation. Next slide. So here's the summary of the findings. Your ONM costs about $1.28 million per year and projected to increase by about 5.5% per year. And the five-year capital improvement program is about $6 million. And then you've got $345,000 a year for annual debt service on wastewater. Next slide. So this is your five-year wastewater CIP and funding sources. And so you can see, um, let's see, the first year is about $2 million, then 1.3 million in '25, '26, 1 million in '26, '27, and about 1 million in '27, '28, and 655,000 in '28, '29. And we're just projecting a little bit of debt in, of about 550,000 in the, the last two years. Next slide. So this is your current monthly wastewater rates. So your residential customers all pay 107.95 per dwelling unit per month. The non-residential pay 136.30 per establishment for commercial and industrial. And then you have an other institutional rate, which is about .0208 dollars per gallon of winter usage. And then Six Mile Village, the adopted rate is .0144 gallon, per gallon of actual flow. Next slide. So we've got two options on the wastewater, and we're proposing just 2% annual increases. And we've got for option one, keeping your current structure and just changing the Six Mile Village to be built as the same rate as residential and commercial customers. So depending on how many, you know, dwelling units of commercial versus residential they have, they will just pay the same rate. So you'd be going from 107.95 up to 110.11 in '25, '26, and then up to 119.19 in year Next slide. This is the second option, and this option is really to address the, uh, the issue of having to categorize between commercial, industrial versus other institutional. So in this structure, residential would be charged the same, but non-residential would also be charged this, uh, uniform structure where they pay .0212, uh, dollars per gallon. And then they're subject to a minimum charge. So '25, '26, that'd be 139.03. And that would include nine and a half hundred cubic feet, and then they would just pay that volumetric rate for any usage above that. So, um, we looked at doing a fixed charge for all, uh, commercial customers, but the other institutional use so much water that it would really increase the rate on the commercial, industrial customers. So this structure kind of resolves the issues and will still allow you to bill those other institutional on a volumetric basis.
So, Michael, I, I have a question. Um, we currently have two restaurants that are paying more than any other restaurant-type business. Can we do something with those two?
Yeah, we, we took a look at that, and we think they, they should have just been placed under the commercial and industrial rate, which is that 136.30 per month.
Okay.
And that's how they should have been categorized under the old study. I think, uh, they weren't categorized that way, maybe because they're new customers that use a lot of water and maybe that, because they share a meter, that could have been factored in. But they should have just been charged the commercial, industrial rate.
So is that something that would go into effect once the, the council approved these new rates then for those two restaurants?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I mean, you could, you could rectify that now if you wanted to, and that would be fine as well. But typically, we make dwelling unit changes and that kind of thing when you adopt the study.
So is, are we going to be held harmless when we drop this rate and we just move forward and the rate would be this amount as opposed to the number of years that they've been charged? Four times that probably? Or three times that? That's an attorney question, probably.
Yeah, I, I, I think, you know, they're probably not going to complain about a reduction, but, you know, and in terms of going back, attorneys I've spoken to say they can like go back really one year or this type of thing. So...
So if you want to start with me, I'm fine with the 2% increase. I, I, I believe that's, that's realistic. I mean, I think that takes into consideration, um, you know, the cost of living and the fact that, you know, there's, that seems doable for, for our ratepayer. And I, I'm okay with that. It's 100, and at the end of the time, it increases at the end of five years, $144 a year. That, that makes sense. I mean, I, isn't it, and will allow us to do everything we want to do with our waste of, um, with our treatment plan. So I, I'm okay with that.
Great. And is there any preference between option one and two?
And, and that has to do, is that mainly with Six Mile Village or?
And the volumetric.
And the volumetric or?
It's, what it really is, is the categorization between the commercial and industrial versus other institutional. So currently, those other institutional use a lot more water than the commercial, industrial, but there's no, as far as we could tell, adopted way of deciding which one is which. Uh, you know, there's no like, uh, usage threshold that you have adopted anywhere. And so this option two would treat everyone the same, where they all face the same minimum charge, which is that 139.03, but then they would pay for any usage above nine and a half hundred cubic feet. And so you're getting, you're still billing those other institutional that are using a lot of water, but you're kind of resolving that issue of having to categorize them.
So, Michael, this is Alvin. So everybody under the commercial, industrial, other institutional would all get charged the 136.30, and then above the how many gallons?
Uh, it's about 7,100 gallons or nine and a half hundred cubic feet per month.
Okay, so that's where the .0212 would kick in and all that, and those, that, that would kick in.
Right.
Because that's based on water usage going across their meter? Is that correct, Michael? Is that how that's calculated?
Yeah, you can, you're looking at the actual usage.
Oh, oh.
Currently, I look at winter usage for the commercial.
Right, but, but they track that additional gallon, it's, it's water use, correct?
Yes.
Okay. What, what's...
What's the impact to the budget on either one of those?
So we, we think it's going to be pretty much revenue neutral, but, uh, you know, you should collect a bit more, uh, revenue under the, uh, option two. So I, I think we're, you know, basically looking at a similar impact on both scenarios.
So then, Michelle, if I had a restaurant, I'd be paying $136 a month, and then you'd look at my meter usage, and if it was over the allocated amount, it would be charged that .0212. How do, what, what do you think? I mean, is it, what would you like to see? I mean, in terms of, is that, does that impact staff when they do that? Or do they currently do that? Or is it just going to a spreadsheet or?
No, actually, our system, our accounting system would be able to account, calculate that.
Okay.
Through our utility billing.
Okay.
It would just require some programming, but be similar to what we're doing in terms of, I mean, I know we have a flat rate and then a consumption underwater, but you could do similar and then have the basic rate, and then once you're over that minimum amount, then you could charge the additional consumption.
So the assumption would be for the commercial and industrial, that if they're going over that allocation, that must mean business is pretty good. So they're bringing in some additional money, correct?
Yeah, I mean, the way we look at it is it's got to be based on cost of service. So it's just impacting your, your system more because additional flow.
Sure, sure.
For me, I like option two. It breaks it down a little more, actually. I think you get a little better.
I'm okay with option two.
I think financially, it would hurt us more to go with option one than any other institutional.
It's, it's, it's not anything different we do, well, we don't do that for sewer, but I mean, they're being charged, they're, they're giving them a minimum amount, if they exceed the minimum amount, they pay for it. Yeah, that, I'm okay with that.
Okay, great. So wastewater is a little... We have a decision on that.
Although I did notice on that, one of those final slides there, um, that we are one of the most expensive with our wastewater collection.
I know.
I mean, compared to, yeah. There's some other...
This is, uh, the next slide just shows the impacts of the 2% increases on single-family residential. So first year, go to 110.11, and then up to 119.19 in year five. And next slide. This shows the regional rate survey. And so the average for the region was $81.70. And you're currently at 107.95, and would go to 110.11 in next year. And you can see that, you know, there, there are some agencies that are higher, like Calaveras County Water District and Amador at 154. Uh, next slide. Then you have a customer assistance program, which allows low-income water and sewer customers to apply for bill, uh, assistance. And it was established by Resolution 22-68. And the program launched in October 2022, funded using non-rate revenues, which is in compliance with Prop 218, and limits funds available on a first-come, first-served basis. And applications are accepted between April 1st and May 31st of each year.
So, Mike, if, if we go back to that slide, I, I'd like us to consider and talk about increasing that cap every year. If we're increasing the rates, you know, should we be increasing the amount of assistance? And, Michelle, how many, this comes from, um...
So we, you generate this off of...
The late fees.
Late fees.
Yeah, the late fees, correct?
On our rate revenue. So we have about 62 slots available for both sewer and, um, water. Water receives $20 credit, sewer receives 25. So we look at our projection for our late fees based on historical costs and then divide it by how much of a credit we're going to give to know how many spots. We currently have about 45 people taking advantage. We do have something in the front where they can, we're always offering it, but then they can also, we're promoting it, letting people know when they come in.
So this, this, um, application window isn't a hard window then?
Yeah, not so much.
So people come and knock on our door?
Yeah, and anytime anybody is not taking advantage of it and we're, um, offering them, like we're a payment plan or whatnot, we will offer this to them. PG&E is how we certify it. That's one piece. If they're receiving cares, um, through PG&E, then they're automatically qualified. Otherwise than that, we ask them to show us... then they're automatically qualified. Otherwise than that, we ask them to show us some sort of other assistance like uh you know, through A- um ATA, um since they no longer have the LiWAP program, but they might be receiving other assistance.
So Michelle, do you have a recommendation of what percent we could increase this on an annual basis or would it change? I mean, that what's what's a safe thing to do with that?
Well, typically in the budget, we're already proposing that to you, what we think we could afford.
Okay.
And we are, you know, we're conservative, but we're looking at the trend of the increase over the last five years of what that late fee has done.
The late fee has to go up too.
Yeah, it has to go up.
It has to track.
Because we have to.
Yeah, yeah, it has to track.
Now, we do have some customers that come in and say, I'd like to help people pay their bills. And we have one lady who's come in several times and given us, just written a check. And we will put it into this cap program which would increase those funds, but that's one person and it's very small. Um but it does, you know, pay for a little bit more, so we'll estimate that. And so that might be something too. You know, I don't know how many people will.
Is it is it physically doable? I mean, on on an annual basis? Can we do that after the fact? I mean, I I worry a little bit about if the ever some, you know, people start paying their bills and the late fees drop. I mean, like you say, you 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 have an historical accounting.
We have a historical. And we started this program in October of twenty-two, so I mean, we've collected late fees for a long period of time. So we could go back and determine a reserve and from prior years that's sitting in our reserves there that was you know, derived from late fees. You could go back a period of time and set that money aside to increase the program.
Just, you know, one of one of my concerns, I mean, and I don't know how we increase it or what the appetite of the council is, is, you know, currently minimum sewer and water for a single is almost a hundred and eighty dollars. And then people get a discount. Well, if we keep raising rates, we're just gonna push that past that hundred and eighty dollars and you know, I mean, it it's not gonna be a win for them, so I I it's something I'd like us to at least look at and consider what that would look like so that we still can support them on a monthly basis.
There was no slide on a total total, was there?
That's what I was just doing.
Yeah, like what's your total total? Is it two hundred dollars a month, like by the end of the um twenty-nine?
With no usage.
It goes to, it goes with sewer.
Without flushing a toilet.
Was was.
Fifty-nine, fifty-nine ninety on water.
And it's one nineteen nineteen on.
And no matter what on Utica, it'd be seventeen seventy-one. Whatever that is.
So I I came up with current with water, the JPA um and sewer, right, currently we're about a hundred and eighty-seven dollars.
That's where we're at total right now.
Right now, and after five years, based on the study, we'd be at two twenty-one thirty-four, so it's a thirty-three dollar, almost a thirty-four dollar a month difference.
Total.
Total.
Five years.
After five years. So that's, you know, when you do the math, it's four hundred and seven dollars. More than a person's gonna be paying in five years for water and sewer.
So in five years, your total bill without flushing a toilet is two twenty-one thirty-four?
Yes.
Thirty-four dollars of much more.
Yeah.
Than what we're paying right now. That was like a hundred dollars more than I paid five years ago. Uh well, no, let's let's say it was one twenty-seven, not that long ago. And for everything. And we're talking, yeah, okay.
It was, but we didn't raise water and sewer.
For fourteen years.
Or, yeah, twelve, something like that, a long time, so.
No, we got.
I definitely don't wanna get back in that predicament again either.
No, and when you live, when you live in a small community, you have to, you don't have very many people to share.
And the more habitat for community you get or housing.
Right, so that's gonna help.
Do we have those?
Put that into.
Prostitutes.
Positive, I'm sure it's built into it, you got five years.
Um and also um the habitat.
And construction based on a five-year average or something? That's why I I mean, you know, if you do a two percent, just like we do with sewer, it ends up you go from a hundred and eighty-seven to two oh five, which is you know, a seventeen, almost eighteen dollar a month increase. Which is, you know, a two hundred dollar increase as opposed to a four hundred dollar increase over five years.
My only concern is are you are you keeping up with anything?
Exactly.
I mean, are you doing a two percent and a and a five percent on water? I mean, two percent, two percent, you're not keeping up with sewer.
Well, he said.
Two percent, we are.
But.
Sewer.
With sewer, we're keeping up.
We're keeping up with tires, gas.
Yeah, that's what he said.
Yeah, but with water and UWPA, it's gotta be a ten percent or a six.
So I guess I'm I'm wondering if we can lessen the water as well. Maybe it can't be two percent, but could it be three or could it be four? Is there a more?
Water, take out the Utica, it's only a five percent.
Right, it's five percent.
So if we use a reserve.
Six is the Utica.
If we use the reserve now.
Yeah, just we continue with, continue with thirteen ninety-one and use a reserve.
So I guess for me, I'm sewer option number two. I'm fine with the proposed monthly water rates going up five percent annually. Because that's what, I mean, that's that's what Michael's also telling us we need to do for our CIP projects. I don't know if we can get to them all, I have no idea. But I I wanna I wanna get to those projects and 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 you've talked about if you can't do it, then we need to hire contractors.
I know, I know, I know, I know, I know.
And that's based on getting grants too.
Right, and that's.
No, the one grant that's in there is the one that's in the works that's almost.
Okay.
So Michael, does it just have to be?
Hold on, let me, let me go for one more second.
A bit.
And hold it, hold it. Hold tight. And then no matter what we do, we end up at seventeen seventy-one for Utica on option one or two.
Yeah, I I don't, I can't.
For me, I would love to put in the caveat of I do like having a reserve for Utica for things. So but can we keep our reserves at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars each year? So whatever we're charging, we we can adjust that. My 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 compromise or whatever would be to work it backwards, work it backwards each year on this council.
So if you, if if you.
Do not exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in a reserve. If there's more than that, you would then spend it back to every customer.
You will have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars if you keep the rate the same at the end of the five years. So you've got what you want with that, and we don't raise that that rate. You have that. You have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in reserve at the end of this five year period.
If we don't touch it, you're saying?
If if we if we use a portion of that reserve, then not increase the Utica contribution that each person makes. You end up with two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
More if we just figure it out this year.
Right, this year.
Twenty-four.
So you will.
That's fine. I just I just I don't want to.
Have it lower than two fifty.
I don't wanna handicap myself. Down the.
You guys need to go get a mic to eat or something.
So Michael, my my question is, you talked about capital improvement, debt service. If we borrow six hundred thousand, we probably need around seven hundred thousand dollars. I don't wanna put you on the spot, but is that only attainable if we do a five percent increase each year? Or can we do a lower increase and receive that debt service?
Yes, that's what I want.
I think uh, you know, if you use cash for more of that CIP and and you know, didn't fund the whole thing that you have listed in your CIP, then it's possible that we could lower it from five percent, but you just have less reserves.
We end, I just don't wanna end up with a council five, ten years from now who's gonna be like, we gotta clean up this mess.
Right.
I don't want that either.
And only.
And then everyone gets jacked up for like thirty percent.
Right. And my only other concern on the Utica thing is if we have a water year one or a water year six.
But it's.
The revenue, the revenue, I know, but if we have water year ones for, I'm just, I'm throwing out a few too many, then that changes the whole game plan there too. Because that is such a swing on that, on that, on that. Uh that's my only other.
I don't know.
Another thing to keep in mind here is that these are maximum rates.
Right.
So you can always go lower if things, you know, come in better than expected, if you get grant funding or there's, you know, less cost on the Utica side.
If we're not doing our CIP, we're behind.
You're setting up the next council so that if they have an oops, uh-oh, we have to deal with some major catastrophe, they can go up to a certain amount on these rates, but you can't um go over that.
I'm 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 okay.
You can't, we're gonna prove it, but we don't have to do it.
Okay, I'm I'm okay with that.
And annually, we bring you the rates.
Right, I have the next.
Like we obviously want to keep the rates as low as possible.
I know, but I know me and you talked about it, like I was really not wanting to raise rates.
I know.
But we have to raise rates enough to keep up with
Cost of living.
Cost of living and raises and all that and the new projects we have to do, so I know.
I agree. I I I hear what you're saying, but I I just, you know, Mike, we have, Michael, we had a the other water district uh filed, they 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 did a two eighteen last year and they got filed against. And then they, the folks that feel that they're doing another two eighteen, so people understand the process now. And so I I I wanna package this so that people can understand that if five percent is our ceiling, we don't necessarily have to go to five percent, but I'd also like a little bit of time so people can start to think about what that, how that's gonna impact their monthly budget too. I I really do, especially for um for folks that are on a fixed income and and things like that. I mean, is there something like that that you could structure for us or is it just what we can do on an annual basis? Um is it five percent?
Yeah, I I think like the main, the main piece of your public outreach is gonna be the Proposition two eighteen notice. And uh I think we can highlight your low-income discount program for customers. And then there's a forty-five day noticing period where the customers can submit written protests. And, you know, at the public hearing, you can consider all of the public comment. And so I, you know, I think in terms of PR, that's kind of what the the process looks like.
Okay, I'd also suggest um that we change the verbiage of how we um categorize UWPA on the bill. It is a conveyance fee, basically. I mean, it's part of our water system. You we it, we have to have it in order to get water delivered to the city. And when we are like portioning it out, I think people don't really understand what that that is. And so it's just, it's a conveyance fee or just put it in as part of the water. I don't know if we're allowed to do that legal.
So Michael.
Yeah, Tom's on now.
Can we, just like we were talking about with Utica, what would be the impact on the overall dollars that we're gonna collect if we didn't charge any more than we're currently charging for the usage over seven hundred and fifty or gallons or whatever that is for water? I mean, would that truly impact it? Is there, is that another place where we can just keep that number constant every month? As opposed to jacking that up by five percent if we go back to that slide?
Yeah, so are you referring to the wastewater or the water?
Water, water.
Say that again, I lost you.
Okay, wait, let's let's get back to this, this slide first. Okay.
This one?
So if you do the eleven HCF monthly, we're 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 ratcheting that up by five percent every year, except for, I mean, what if, what what impact would it be if we just left it at eighteen fifty-nine and not and not let it go to twenty-three dollars? You know, that's that's five dollars or so and, you know, it's, I know it's not a lot, but that's sixty dollars a year. Would that have a huge impact?
Yeah, well, we'd have to take a look at what that would do, uh but I think, you know, ultimately you can decide whether you wanna do a lower overall increase or if you wanna increase the fixed charge more or if you wanna increase the the volumetric charge more. Uh that's kind of up to you, um to how you structure the rate increase.
So we could decide to leave that current rate of eighteen fifty-nine the same for the next five years? If we so choo chose to do so?
Yes, but we would need to either pick up the difference on the fixed charge or, you know, collect less revenue.
But would that less, would that, is it? Is that revenue substantial? I wonder, I mean, I'm I'm trying to, I'm trying to go to the middle here for me so I can support this.
How many rate pairs do we have? Seventeen or eighteen hundred?
Yeah, I think, you know, if you were to adopt the maximum increases, then you could and things came in better than expected, then you could just hold the volumetric rate like you're suggesting, that that is an option. Uh otherwise, we need to really look at, you know, what that would mean for your financial plan and reserves, is, you know, making sure that you can fund everything.
So so PR-wise, we're we're gonna go out there and you're gonna post and do a public notice, we're gonna do a hearing, but all people are gonna hear is that we're raising rates five percent. They're not gonna hear that every year we're gonna look at it. They're they're gonna stop listening once they hear the five percent.
It it has the potential to go up, yeah.
Yeah, I I think that's a good point, that they will see the notice with the maximum increases. You know, but that's something we can emphasize in the notice that you're gonna be looking at it each year and that it it won't exceed that that amount of cost. But, you know, that's something that we hear a lot in terms of
What is a decrease?
When you make the decision is.
And I don't know, for me, I look at them as three separate things, like sewer, we're only doing a two percent increase, which I think is fine. Water, we're doing a five percent increase, and I I think that's within the realm. I mean, a five percent increase every year is within the realm and you're doing the projects.
But you've already agreed in it, I'm only teasing. It wouldn't be five percent if we kept the Utica fee at thirteen ninety-one, it'd be like four point something then.
Well, but Utica's then, Utica's at zero percent the first year, I'm I'm using the wrong of the option, and then it's at six point two the other.
But but if you only want a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar reserve, we can maintain that two hundred and fifty thousand dollar reserve. So that five percent really isn't a five percent increase, it's four point, I don't know what the math is like, I can't do it over my, in my head. But you know what I'm saying? So you take out that thirteen ninety-one, um that you you would take that annual increase out, so it wouldn't be really a truly five percent across the board. It'd probably be like four eight or whatever, which maybe is a little bit doable. And if we did something with uh HCF monthly, we could get it down to a four point five increase or something. And I still think we get where we wanna get. And it's not five.
I would caution against the, you know, leaving the Utica fee that low because in year six, you know, you're not fully covering the costs potentially. And you're gonna need to really jack that rate up to make up for the difference because it's just not fully covering the annual payment. So it may leave the next um study kind of needing to do a large increase.
Yeah, but I think you're truly.
Well, you've been collecting for that reserve, and so all of a sudden at the end of twenty-nine thirty, you don't have that reserve anymore.
Well, you have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We should have.
Maybe.
We should, I mean, I, but also it depends on the other partner, it depends on, you know, I think.
It depends on if Utica is healthy or not, like if they need more, you can do it and we can't. I mean, I don't wanna be put in that position either, so I I see what he's saying. I would hate to be going into twenty-nine thirty on a rate study and all of a sudden they come out and say you have to do a thirty percent increase.
Like CCW.
Like CCW just did. That's the thing, like when you do the, a healthy increase every year, and I used to say this all the time at my previous employer, um which they didn't, and then all of a sudden we had to do a thirty percent increase and people couldn't do it. I mean, it just, it gets to that point, it's so.
But I think, I think they're gonna get frustrated at the end of five years and we, we're now paying Utica their five hundred and forty thousand or whatever it is, and we're sitting on a four hundred thousand, five hundred thousand dollar reserve.
I hear that too.
I, that's what I, I.
You know, that.
So there's gotta be a split the difference. There's gonna be, there has to be a split the difference. I don't think we should completely not increase fees. Maybe it's twenty-seven, twenty-eight, we start increasing, or twenty-eight, twenty-nine, like you, we start doing it there.
I'm okay, I I'm okay with.
But here's the thing, that council can make that decision, but if you pass it, you can go up to that point, but you don't have to do that.
I I think it's gonna be a hard sell if they, they're they're gonna have to trust, the rate payers are gonna have to trust that that council.
Whoever they vote in.
Whoever they vote in is gonna do the right thing. I mean, I'd much rather see us, I mean, if if we're talking about some kind of ratchet, I I'd like that ratchet to be built into this, where we start and we build up. I mean, so so it's not such a hard hit to people. I worry about that.
Oh, I.
I I worry about.
It's a lot, I mean, water and wastewater, everything you added up, that is a big bill.
That's a big bill.
It's a big bill, and your, your, the state has more and more regulations. I mean, it's a huge bill.
Right, and and this isn't just the only bill going up. Everybody's bills are going up. So I don't want to also subsidize for other other bills going up because your insurance is going up, because your cable's going up, because all your other stuff. Why should we subsidize that too because? And then take the hit on our CIP. Why should we subsidize that too? Because, and then take the hit on our CIP. So you have to think of it from both ends too, like, I want to do, we need to do our part, but we also need to be responsible about the, the CIP part too, so.
And the only thing I can say is that too, is for me is when this, when we get another city administrator, whatever, I'm not, but that we, we very much drive forward that these projects don't need to be done.
I think.
And then, and then people can see things being done. They can see the Main Street Sewer project being done. They can see their money being spent.
See, I think that's the other, but sewer is 2% and we can do that. I, I guess if we had, we, if we had water, I mean, I know replacement water lines and things like that, but we haven't, we haven't had anything with the last decade. We haven't done any of it.
In years.
We're finally starting. I know, that's.
Well, move away sewer and, and we're doing, we're only increasing sewer by 2%. So.
But nobody will ever see the, nobody will ever see the backflip picture, black wash picture what we've done. It's up at the, you know, I mean, it's a water treatment.
It's like replacing your washing machine, it's not sexy. Nobody gets excited about that, but you need it and it's really important, it's vital to your health, so, um, but yeah, I, anyway, I don't know. So have we given, Mike, have we given you, have we given up direction?
Yeah, so I, I think, uh, it sounds like the decision was made on wastewater option two.
Yep, okay.
And we'll come back with a reduced option for water for next time and we can move forward from there.
And let us know if that, with that reduced option for water, what we're sacrificing.
We'll do.
What, what is our risk of that? Yeah, I need another risk.
Are we, like, is our, is our debt ceiling being jeopardized, I guess, or is it, are we, are we in, in a debt situation?
And then on the Utica, I'm looking at using some of the reserves on that, right?
That's right.
Yeah.
Well, Alan is talking about if we had 215 reserve.
Yeah, I mean, if we have 250,000 reserve by year 30, I'm cool with that.
Yeah, I, I.
We can keep it up.
You would. Joe, no.
Yes, yes. I was thinking about a conversation that Michael and I had. He was even talking about looking at a 10-year contribution to Utica.
Based on, based on that 10%.
That might be actually, that might be more policy.
You might be able to, instead of doing where you're matching the contribution, you could start a little lower and then over that 10 years.
I'm okay with ratcheting, I'm okay with ratcheting things up. I'm okay with that.
And you're using some of that reserves, but it's not like you're drawing as large of a deficit from that.
And the only thing I can say, the only thing for me too, is on Utica, we're spending all of the reserves there.
Right.
We're not doing a CIP project for five years. So when this is over, with that five year that we just came up with and talked about, they're going to have to ratchet that. They're, I mean, they're, they're doing a five-year standstill and spending everything down. So there's going to have to be a big ratchet there too. So are we going to have to jump with that or are we already going to position ourselves to be there?
I, I, I hear, I hear what you're saying and I appreciate you advocating for them. But I really think the conversation has to happen after the exemption, where, where we are. And I mean, you only can do a CIP project once.
Right.
And then you take it off the books.
Correct, so we could, we, it'll be, what it should be is be this and then it'll plateau out and come down and it'll be level.
Or it's going lower.
Right, I'm just, I'm saying, it comes here and then comes back down and over, but we got to get to the peak first at some point because right now they are our only water supply. We have no wells, we have no nothing of that nature, um, so.
I understand.
You got to be careful there too, is my only bid.
I understand, but it just is, um, maybe because I'm retired, I don't know.
No, I, I don't.
But I just, I mean, and it's, and I, I agree Caroline, I don't know if we should, I don't think we should subsidize, but I think we should be realistic and mindful.
Yes.
And I think we should be able to defend what we're going to do. You know, and it's hard for me to sit here and defend what we're going to do and raise, unless we ratchet the, the Utica contribution. It's hard to sit on $400,000 and then charge people money.
I agree.
I mean, so I think we, I think this is a good beginning discussion and you guys have heard me and, and I appreciate that, but you know, I just.
And I can also.
There's a lot of moving parts here.
Yes, there is.
You know, we're good with the wastewater, so it's the water and Utica.
Yeah, and I, and I can, all I can say is I can, I, I'm trying to, I'm putting some faith in the Michael here, I'm putting faith in Joel, I'm putting faith in Rebecca and everybody and, you know what I mean?
Yeah, and you and our.
Right, all the JPA members have to put their best foot forward on saying what we need to survive for the next five, 10, 15 years. So we got to play off of that too.
I know, I know, I know, I know, I know. Mike, how many of the recent 218s have been challenged in that past that you've been a part of?
On my specific projects, uh, maybe once, one in 10 years that had a successful protest? Or are you talking about legal challenge?
Anything can be legally challenged.
I would say either.
Yeah, either one.
Yeah, I, I don't think I've had a study be legally challenged personally, but I have seen a, a successful protest, but that usually only happens at very small districts, like 50 connections.
How many connections do we have, Mike?
It's a good question. One, do you know how many connections?
17.
One of us is 17, one of us is 18.
1800.
Okay, that's what I thought. Oh, Union's 17, okay.
So, I don't know. I'm good with sewer option two. I'm good with option two on Utica.
Sewer's easy.
I'm good with option two on Utica, it's the smoothest one. It's 0 and 6% straight across for the most part.
Now you changed your mind, what are you telling me?
No, I am, but I don't, I don't think we need to end up with the reserve all the way at $500,000. I'll use that caveat. Somehow we can, we can get that reserve down a little bit. I don't mind spending that reserve a little bit.
So if we have to come up with a reserve amount that you, that you support and then work.
Right, backwards.
So 215 needs it the same, okay, good.
I mean, because for Utica, it still doesn't go, it's still lower in 25, 26. It only goes up, what, less, like 70 cents in 26, 27.
And my only thing is just, yeah, you just got to jump.
But I get what you're saying, we're sitting on a boatload of money, but we can't do anything with, because our partner is also.
Well, or do, or, or here's a, here would be a bigger question for Joel or for somebody is, do they, could, could we spend those on projects? Could we spend that money on projects?
What do you mean?
I mean, if our member agency couldn't, could we still spend that?
So I think that would just have to be a JP discussion or event.
Wouldn't it be a loan then? So that UPUD could pay us back?
I don't know.
That almost sounds like a gift of public funds.
I don't know, I'm asking, I don't know, I'm just asking other ways.
How do you do half of a project?
What's half?
How do you do half of a project?
I don't know.
You know, I guess, Michael, I apologize, I don't, I didn't mean to be a thorn in your side, but I guess I, I walked in with a mindset of the sewer at 2% and my mindset was, you know, what's reasonable is some kind of cost of living, you know, that matches the Consumer Price Index or something so that we can maintain. And I understand maintaining means maintaining status quo and it doesn't allow for growth. I, I get that. But I was hoping for some kind of, something in the middle that looked at what the Consumer Price Index is, because that keeps up the cost of living and then what additional dollars do we need for CIP projects? And as you're going to say to me, that's the 5%, that's what I'm going to show.
I was just going to say that.
Yeah, and that really is the 5%. That's our essential for a question in this study.
I knew you were going to say that.
All right, well, I think he's got some good feedback. Something to add for you, right, Mike?
Okay, great.
When do we need to adopt this by? Mike, when do we need to adopt this by?
Um, so the first increase is July 1st of next year, so you know, by June of next year really is the deadline. But we'd like to do it this year if possible.
You know, my, my concern is, is that you have three city council pretty full up for reelection, which would be a majority this morning. And, uh, and I think it's not that I'm worried about losing or running or whatever, but I mean, you, you could get three people to vote that we raised rates too high and shoot this whole thing down too. So I think we need to put some thought into what is the most palatable thing that we can present? You know, and I go back to, I'm okay with sewer 2%, you know, can we come up with some ratchet? What can we do with our Utica reserve? Because I, this work could change and this thing could all be shot down. It could.
Yep.
But I think we could have this done before the end of the year.
Yeah, I think.
I, I think, I mean.
I think it needs to be tweaked, maybe bring it back in a couple of months.
Well, you mean, but if we approve it, can't it always?
The rate increase won't happen until next year, but it's, it's, it's adopted, yeah, exactly. It's gone out for.
I, I know, well, okay. Thank you, Michael.
All right.
Really thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Enjoy your evening.
Hold on, you have a.
You too.
Oh, do we have any comments? Joel.
Okay. One other comment.
Sorry.
Good evening, I'm John Luntzker, General Manager of Utica Water Power. Great discussion tonight. Appreciate the thoughtful approach on all the different people who will be impacted by this, including the agencies and, and the community. And I think that this is definitely, it's tough. Raising rates on, on anyone in, in your community is really tough, but I do appreciate that, um, it looks like there may be some options to, to support Utica in a way where, where we can make it work. And I think that the city is in a really fortunate position in that you do have a reserve and so you can have more flexibility to smooth that rate than maybe if you had a lot less than that. So I think you are in a, a good position. The one thing I would say, and this has been touched on, is with the five-year plan that we are considering right now, we are assuming a water year of 2.5, which is the average. And so if we were to get consecutive drought years of three, four, five, or heaven forbid, six, our revenue drops from a high of about 1.8 million down to 600,000. And so if, in the event that we did have three or four water years, fives and sixes, we would end up spending our reserves down and we would be coming back and having a conversation about how are we going to continue just operating. CIP's gone, reserve contributions are gone, this is just O and M at that point. And so one of the things that we had discussed at the staff level and a little bit at the board level was what's called a drought contingency fee that you can add into a rate study. And it gives the council and the UPUD board an option that they could increase rates in the event that some trigger was pulled. And then you'd have the option already approved to increase your rate and that would give you additional funds to support Utica without having to go and do a new 218. You also would have the option of borrowing from another reserve or going out to the bank or something of that nature. I mean, there are other ways to come up with that, but I know at CCWD, when we did a, a rate study, we did include that and this was during the 2012 to 2016 drought. And you know, the drought was so bad that it was just not enough water sales and so that was put in. They never ended up utilizing it, but it can be a nice backstop to have as an option. One other thought that I wanted to share with you is, uh, you mentioned my, the concern about low-income folks and I, I really share that concern. One of the ways to give them a lower bill is to have more volumetric charge and less fixed charge and then you reward people who, who use less water. And so someone who's on a fixed income and maybe living in a small property, they can pay the base rate and very little volumetric and that keeps their bill down, but someone who has a larger yard and maybe doesn't care about volumetric charge, they can water a bunch of landscaping and have gardens and lawns, well, they pay more. And so that's a way to give your customers choice in how they control their bills. Now, the risk to the council is you have more volatility in what you're bringing in. And so many water districts end up trying to have a higher fix and a smaller volumetric because that gives you that, for sure, we're going to get what we need. But it is something that the state is asking for more vol, more of the volumetric because they want to encourage water conservation. So just food for thought, you know, something to consider and maybe for your consultant to consider. The final thing that I, I wanted to share with you is I do believe in public outreach and education. And what happened with UPUD, uh, much of the feedback that I've heard was, we didn't really understand what was going on, we didn't feel like we were heard. We didn't feel like, you know, enough outreach was done or it wasn't done in a way that was effective. And so I would encourage you to consider not starting your public outreach with a Prop 218 notice. But by, but ideally, you know, when I ran rate increases, we started a year in advance, we just started with focus groups, we got the community on board, we got their input. And by the time it was here, and especially a 218 notice, everyone knew what was going on, they weighed in, they felt like they were part of it. Not that they were being told what was happening, but they were part of what was happening. And we had a protest rate that was at near 40% the prior rate, rate increase, down below 5% on both water and sewer for those 218s. And I was really proud of that. Uh, but that takes time and that takes investment and that takes town halls and, and Facebook and it takes getting out there in the community and educating people. The risk of that is you bring attention to your rate increase and then you can get more people upset than maybe you ever had before. So a lot of agencies do the terminal mode and it's just radio silence, send the 218 now and then kind of hope for the best. So what, what I would say is, you know, it's worth considering which way you want to go, but I know Utica is a large chunk of this rate and the increase. And so we're committed to in any way that would be helpful supporting whatever the council decides in terms of education and outreach. And I'll take the heat because I know I'm that piece, but I believe that that piece is very important. And I believe that once people understand it, they not only can support it, or get be neutral, but they can actually support that fee. And it just takes getting them out there and seeing it or showing what's going on behind the scenes. It's an incredible system as, as you all know. So with that, appreciate the discussion, conversation. Thanks to Steve for getting up to speed so quickly and Michelle for explaining some of the questions that I had earlier. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joel, thank you. Any other public comment?
Is there anyone else online now?
You know, Michael, I, I really liked that, um, that kind of trigger language that Joel was just talking about with in, in the event of a drought or in the, in the event of conservation and that there would be an additional fee that, that happens. Are you familiar with anything like that in your, in your dealings?
Yes, in fact, your last study, you did have a pass-through provision in your Proposition 218 notice that was based on drought years and that's something that we can add in, into the notice for the study if, if you would like.
So, so it's an increase in your water bill even though you're not using additional water because you have to conserve?
Because the water year, the, the water year is, is a drought.
So it's not, it's not based on water consumption then? It's a surcharge because you're in a drought and you're not going to generate as much money?
There you go, because we're, we're done yet. Our powerhouses can't offset that.
Yep. Okay. Once again, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you, have a good night.
Have a good night or two.
All right, bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Okay, does anyone need to take a break or is it going to roll right into item B?
Just a quick question I wanted to clarify. So you would like, Michael, would you go back and run a couple scenarios with him? And then maybe in a month or so, bring it back here?
I think so.
Yes, please.
Yeah, I'd like to keep moving forward and I, yeah.
I just want to give him some information when I meet with him and be clear on what you'd like to see. So.
Steve, did you have a comment or?
August is our next meeting. I, I wonder if he can get something right then. I guess we can talk with him about timeline, but you know, I think you push it out of the month if we don't need to push it out of the month, but given the amount of time he needs to read on the numbers and bring some things back, I'd like to shoot for the first meeting in August if we could.
We also have our audit presentation in August.
Oh, exciting.
So we have habitat at some point too in August.
I just want to read the last paragraph because I'm no finding.
Exactly.
That's all I care about and I know we're going to have that.
Oh, yeah, sure.
That's all I look for. Okay, so Sam, we're going to take just a five-minute break real quick and we'll come back with another meeting.
Make it six, I'm human too.
Six minutes. Okay, thank you much. We will be coming back for the regular agenda. Item B, this is Rural Recreation and Tourism Program, Utica Park Lithermine Expansion Project Update. Amy.
Mayor and council members, um, I wish I could tell you we were precisely on schedule, but alas, due to extreme weather, it pushed back our playground crew and they now anticipate showing up on the 24th. Um, we also found out that the Burke, that's the Burke playground equipment was going to be arriving next week rather than this week as we had been promised. So we basically read the riot act this morning and told them that that wasn't acceptable and that they needed to get their act together and speak things up. So that's where we are with the playground. Mark Twain has been undergoing renovation at the museum. We have a poll online, a survey monkey going, we've had 38 votes. People want to see him in a specific place overwhelmingly at the base of this new staircase that used to be the old staircase. that used to be the old staircase that will once again become the new staircase. There's him at the bottom of that.
So is that pretty much where he was?
No.
Okay, they'll be a little closer to the stairs then?
He'll be a little closer to the old stairs as you come down.
Okay.
Yeah, so there'll be like an entrance coming in, an entrance coming in. He'd probably be right there. The benches have been initially, the first milling, there will be 12 of them. They're going to cost $1,500 a piece for a commemorative bench, custom-made. So luckily, we will have trees that will be more in the range of $200 each if somebody wants to do something commemorative for a relative. So we'll have different price range for different things, but those benches are going to be expensive. And they're going to be four feet long, they will have metal stands, and then they will have a plaque attached. Bathrooms, they will be starting the utility connections this week. And within a month, we may be seeing the bathroom delivered, which actually is ahead of schedule. So we've been hearing a lot, why do I not see people out there at the playground or at the park? They're not doing anything, we're stalled. That is not the case. There's actually a lot of stuff that is happening where you're not going to see heavy equipment moving. There are people out there who are doing utility connections, there are people at the museum doing renovations, there are people who are finalizing the design on the pavilion, there are people who are finalizing the design on the stage. So there's, you know, a good half dozen things going on behind the scenes, but people go by and they don't see heavy equipment moving. That does not mean that nothing is happening at the playground. I'm not quite sure how to get that message across. We've worked at doing that with the newsletter, we've worked at doing that with Facebook. We've told our planning commissioners to please tell anybody and everybody who you ever hear complaining, please get that word out. Not alas, for the same from anybody, if they could get that word out, that we are in fact progressing. We are surprisingly on schedule except for the playground, which you can see from the schedule, which shows you exactly when each thing that is supposed to occur will occur. There's not anything exciting coming up other than seeing the playground people starting next week.
And I really think, Amy, once that starts, it'll quiet a lot of people down because they'll actually see something going up. Because right now, all we're doing is pushing dirt and pouring concrete.
Correct.
You know, and they're so, and you know, and we tore off the pavilion's roof. So I think once they see people out there and structures, that's going to soften, I think, their concern, I would.
When do you expect the playground at this point to be completed?
So they had allotted 40, 35 days once they started. So if they were to start next week, I would say end of August, but that is my best guesstimate based upon what they have told me. And barring no more streaks of 113 or 110 degree weather.
110?
13.
Days?
No, no, 110 degrees.
No, they had, they had on their schedule that it was like 30 days, start, 35 days start to finish.
And they've gotten a chunk of days in?
Well, so...
That's just for the...
The prep part is actually separate from the, once the spec, people get on the ground. Because it's actually a sub that's working on that.
Okay, so that I see the foundation is there.
Yes, you know how big it'll be.
Yes, okay.
Which is cool.
Yeah, at least we know how big it'll be. And what's sort of bizarre is all the stuff from Europe arrived right on schedule and ahead of schedule. It's the stuff from the US that's being shipped that got delayed for a week, I don't know why. We have expressed our dissatisfaction with that. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Good, anybody have any questions? Do we have anybody online, is there any public left?
No. Just stop.
Okay, we have no public comment, thank you, Amy. We're going to move on to item C. This is approved agreement for the school resource officer position between the City of Angels and Brent Hart School District Chief Allen.
Good evening, council. As you're aware, we've had previous agreements with the school district the last several years for an SRO. This is just a renewal of the agreement. No significant changes. The agreement was sent over to the superintendent of the school district and the principal for review. No concerns or changes were requested based on what was provided to them. And I'm asking for approval from council to move forward with the agreement between the school district and the Discan Police Department to continue to supply a school resource officer for the coming year. There were some, the only changes were some language changes. The situation was to change our staffing if I was to lose my school resource officer. If that school resource officer wanted, decided to go part-time or if the school district chose to want to have an officer, one of my current officers on campus and were willing to pay an overtime rate, so they would be doing it on an extra workday, just to give them that option if, for some reason, we lost our school resource officer. If we did lose our full-time school resource officer, we would start reaching out to try to hire an additional body to eventually fill that position. But as you guys know, I think by now, it's not super easy to hire officers these days. So there's a time component to that, even if we did have that available position to be able to fill it. And it would not be filled with a new officer, it would be filled with a current officer, experienced officer. And that's all I have unless you have questions.
So is it about $80,000 or $90,000 a year, their contribution?
I, I think so, it's hour for hour, basically. So it's, it's school days when they're present, the school district is being billed based on those hours worked. I don't know what the numbers actually worked out to exactly this fiscal year, but that's what we, that's what we initially believed was around $85,000, I think is what the school district allotted.
Then any additional time that the school district requests for football games or basketball games, that's charged at an hourly rate?
That's charged at an overtime rate.
Overtime rate.
Or the school resource officer, depending on what the school wants to do, can flex his work schedule to accommodate those hours to be at the football game or whatever the sports event is. And there's only a couple of those a year that they actually request an officer therefore because of the high number of participants.
Participants.
Yeah.
Are you expecting a change in resource officer or is it the same?
I'm not expecting one for this school year, at least. I'm not expecting any change there. But...
You never know.
Yeah, you never know.
You know, I think that the difficult thing is the optics of that. I mean, I think people have become so used to the resource officer being on the campus and I know he does a phenomenal job. So any kind of heads up you could give to the district or, you know, recruit, I know it's tough, you're already a person short, but it would be a tough hole to plug, I think, for a lot of reasons.
And I actually had, I had the superintendent about a month or two ago asking for the contract and let's get this done, let's get it prepared for next year so we're, we're ready to go. So they're really appreciative of the work. I know that Officer Kirkland's currently doing there and he's going to be there for the foreseeable future until he decides to retire.
But even Jody did a nice job too.
Yeah.
She really did, she really did.
$55,000 is the current budget for our part.
Our part.
What, yeah, our reimbursement.
That's all for 75% of his contract?
We bill off of actual hours.
Oh, actual hours.
Actual hours.
Well, they're getting a heck of a deal.
Well, you've got to consider the Christmas break, spring break.
Well, summer, he's...
Summer, he's working patrol, which is a benefit to us.
So it's a rate.
We like when schools operate because we get an extra, and now that we have the vacancy, so it, it actually allows our two sergeants to work as cover, cover units during the summertime. So I have two bodies out there all of the time.
That's, that's pretty reasonable, Michelle, for the service that's being provided.
Any questions?
Nope.
Probably have no public comment on this one. I'm going to just throw it out there in case there is public comment. Seeing none, bringing it back, we'll be looking for, we need a motion on this one.
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement for the school resource officer between the City of Angels and Brent Hart Union District.
All second. Shemante?
Aye.
Rolio?
Aye.
Hernan?
Aye.
Gerardo?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item D, this is Resolution 24-057 for consideration of moving 79 South Main Street to the museum and then allocating $35,000 in the city's ARPA funds to the project. Amy.
Mayor and council members, Martin right about now is remembering that he promised me he would be here. And I should remind you of that. Basically, this is, thank you, that's exactly what I was hoping you would put up on the screen.
Yeah.
That, believe it or not, is the wonderful 79 South Main Street. It has been proposed to relocate it in the past to the museum. But now we are to the point where this is going to be the main entrance to what will become a shopping center. And so that's going to either have to be demolished or moved. And so basically, that's why we're asking for the ARPA funds since we do see this as an economic development project. It would also be a tourism and educational display at the museum. This was an 1880's house. It, I don't know if you recognize any of the names, the Moores, the Ward's, have links to the Demores, the Cosgraves, Perry, who was postmaster here for 10 years. So there are a bunch of families linked to it who are oddly all buried just down the road at the cemetery, which is sort of really cool. So basically, on this, we have come up with, for everything, it would cost about $60,000. And that includes a foundation at the new site. Yes, that is asbestos siding on the sides will have to be removed. And we have gotten at least one estimate and we're in the process of getting a second estimate for the move. $40,000, we know we can get the move for $40,000, we have a firm quote on that. If we get a lower one, great, if not, not. So we're asking, we also have two people, I am told, who are contributing money to it. The property owner himself, of course, he could just demolish it today, but he is in fact putting so many towards having it moved because he would like to see it be able to be used as an educational facility at the museum.
Well, it still costs them to demolish it and remove the asbestos too.
Yeah, he is willing to donate a lot beyond that. But yeah, yeah. So that's basically all I have on that. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So the total cost is 60 million?
Approximately.
Approximately.
Yes, moving it is 40 firm, the others we have to estimate.
And who's, what happens if there are cost overruns, who picks that up?
Right.
Then it's going to sit there for a while without a foundation or it'll sit there for a while without finishing its renovation.
Maybe the museum foundation could raise some funds for it. That was going to be my question, has, has, do we know if Martin has taken this item to the museum foundation?
My understanding is, is he plans to, if he hasn't already. But the contribution was to come from something beyond.
Yeah, he does a monthly report with them at their meetings, so I'm sure it's... And we, he's been...
I think he expected, I think it's the last meeting.
Yeah, and he's, I mean, he's been talking about this when I was at the museum meetings. He's been talking about this for at least two years.
It's been honored, it's what I came on.
Yeah, and basically, when our house got demolished across the street, he was like, "We need to save this house." And so he's been talking about it for a long time, that was five years ago. So I know, I know he's starting bringing it to them. And I love the idea that it's going to be moved between the two buildings and then set up with a whole bunch of things that are kind of in the museum that are household goods, so it's set.
From the 1880's, 1890's. They would be sitting inside, and that's where it would be located.
Like, you know, when you go to Bodie and you can kind of look in and like kind of see everything set.
Did they get that house into there?
Yes, we spent a long period of time on Friday talking about which Alanthus trees, Chinese tree of heaven, we would have to take out. It will also require taking out a portion of the fence over at the church because it will come through the church and down and around and then back up.
Well, they're going to take a portion of the church's fence down, is that what?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's included in this renovation, $5,000 renovation on site? Or is that included in the transportation?
That's part of that $40,000.
Sorry, okay. The $40,000.
Okay, so it's going in between the two, it's not going down lower where I thought it was going down lower by...
There were a bunch of water and sewer lines down there and to put it in there would be a challenge if we ever had a break or needed to do a repair.
Martin talked about hiding something, it was kind of hiding some...
It would have if it was put down below.
Down in here.
Oh, yeah. But putting it between those two buildings when they lost that tree, where that red square is, it's, I don't know if you guys noticed, but it's kind of a wasteland-ish area, it's kind of...
It's going to be regraded and flattened.
Yeah.
So, and some drainage is going to be put in there. Evidently, that barn drains down and causes quite a...
And who's pulling permits to move it and reset it and stuff like that, is that included in?
I was so thrilled to learn that the cost includes the cost of getting a permit from Caltrans and CHP by the people doing the move. We are coordinating with AT&amp;T Comcast and if necessary, PG&E.
Are they going to have to lift wires to get...
Yes, they're going to probably have to loosen, I'm saying yes, probably they're going to have to loosen the lower wires, which are the communication wires.
And what about fire, I mean, what about code compliance, what is, what's, how is, will the fire marshal have to look at it, will it have to have, you know, any kind of fire?
It will not be occupied, it will not be hooked up to anything.
So therefore, it doesn't have to have any fire?
Other than the foundation.
Other than the foundation.
Foundation, right now, it has the old rillite, it doesn't count.
It's locked, I'm sure.
It's got locked.
My only concern is that you have two donations that are anticipated to help with the additional cost. And I would hate to have something happen and those fall through and not have that secured. Then we own a building that is, you know, a hazard situation or it's unsafe or it's not secured properly or it's not being renovated or safely mounted or installed.
So here, here is the risk on that we have. We know we have enough money, if you were to allocate 35, to both remove the asbestos and that has to occur before it's moved. They want moving for the asbestos.
Right.
And plus the $40,000 to get it there. So it's going to be a stripped-down building and we can get it there. Might we fall short and have to wait until the foundation can generate some additional funds to finish the restoration? Yes, that is a risk.
But it's not our risk, because they're not going to come back to us and ask us for money.
Well, no, it's...
And from that point, from that point forward, the foundation is going to do the renovation, resite it.
The asbestos is already gone, so... Or... To be able to raise money.
I said, if we end up assuming the risk of the building being on the property and not being able to be installed properly or something like that, I mean, the asbestos is already removed, you can just get rid of the building, you can take it down.
You could.
Yeah, and it wouldn't be that much money.
Or volunteers could cite it or whatever.
Yeah, or, or, but I, I, I mean, I've known Martin a long time and I know that he's very resourceful in finding funding and things like that. So I feel, unfortunately, he can be here, but I'm pretty confident that he would be able to find the funding he needed or he would throw his own fundraiser to figure it out.
And I think Martin's done a fantastic job, you know, I mean, I think he's really turned the museum around.
He would move that building on his own back if he could.
Yeah, no, I...
He can't.
He's done a lot of work there.
So I have one question from Michelle then. So how much ARPA money do we have left?
There we go.
Apparently, after you take out the money we've set aside for the park, there's 362,000 available.
Okay, so we have enough. And that, and now, did we already pull out money for the Hoffin Shop?
Yes, we did.
That's out of there too. The park is out of there. What else was there?
The benches, the trash cans, the decorations.
The branches, the trash cans, the Christmas decorations. I'm just, I'm adding it all up in my head.
No, no, that's okay, that's okay.
Okay.
The flags, we had not...
We never got it, we don't know.
That's not part of it.
But the decorations, we did.
The decorations, the girl fans, but yeah.
Okay, what else?
Frog flags.
Frog, you have the Hoffin Shop.
No, the actual plaques.
Oh, the frog plaques.
I don't think they ever did those ones, we never voted on that.
We just got three. No, I thought it was a little bit of a budget.
It's like $6,000 something.
Maybe it wasn't the budget.
No, it wasn't the budget.
That's right, it wasn't the budget.
Was it?
Yeah, I think it was.
There, that was, the plaques were in the budget.
Yeah, it was, no, you're...
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh-huh.
And then, we're still pretty flush on that. And I just wanted to make sure we're getting down.
There's a cost for HDL, who manages the Yuki program, which is the Hoffin Shop.
Okay.
That's in there. The GeoCon for the money we set aside for the park and now we'll have this other piece, but that four hundred thousand is already out.
Here Martin going in.
And, um, that's pretty much it. And then we, we had, um, this is where we were at, at the end of the fiscal year and then what we put in our budget has been for basically the Hoffin Shop and parks of 362,000 available. That's in the fund.
So, is there a timeline by which we have to spend those dollars?
No.
No.
Not anymore.
Not anymore, they dropped that?
Uh-huh. So in the, in the audit that we're finishing for fiscal year twenty-three, year end, um, we were able, we had to do a single audit. Because we needed to recognize the rest of this money as revenue and then that releases everything and we can use it however we want.
So it still leaves like three twenty-five ish for a rough number. And my only thing is just I see some other projects maybe around like, and I got a question for you while I got you. Like, what?
You're going to ask it, ask it.
Oh, like Napa. Are we going to code base that sucker still and is that included in the price that Sutton gave us? Or are we just kind of leaving it as is for now?
They're going to smooth it out into one level and I'll have to double check on the ground.
Okay.
That was actually a Chris thing that I, he did tell me they were going to smooth it out.
And what about, we can put waddles out there? How are we going to stop the water from running off that ledge?
Yeah, Chris told me he was going to take care of erosion control.
And so really, it's not going to be, you know, I thought I heard and I envisioned.
Across town, across town bus right now. Yeah, we're a little off topic.
Wait, wait, no, no.
You just got on the cross town bus.
I don't know if we are though because, because my question is, what else could we have used of thirty-five thousand dollars?
Oh.
That's, that was my question.
And that's, and that's why I would have asked that question.
But that's why I was.
We have the trails, right? You're working on the walking trails? Do we have?
That's part of the park.
That's.
My only thing is that prior to you, we had discussed, relative to the Utica Park, we had discussed the idea of having the splash pads. And if we had a funding source identified and it worked out, we were going to kind of table that and see how the finances go. I still absolutely think that our park could benefit from a splash pad, the kids playing in the water.
You're talking Utica Park?
Utica Park. So thirty thousand dollars could get you at least, you know, half of the splash pad. I don't know.
I don't believe you need a touch of splash pad.
I don't know, we looked into it.
I think you, I think you go, if Utica gets done and we still have three hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, you go to trial park.
Yeah, you go to trial or get.
You go to trial, I think people want a dog park, people want a splash park, there's other things.
Yeah, they want restrooms.
I would leave Utica?
No, 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 we.
I would leave Utica. My thing is leave Utica the way it is. It's already been decided, done, designed, everything.
If, if I may intervene, it is much easier to get a grant for recreational purposes than for relocating.
Oh, I see.
Just saying.
So I guess my, my question had a deal, I mean, I want to make sure that, I, I support this idea. I know it's Martin's dream and I think it'd be a great addition to the museum. But, you know, as long as we have dollars to finish the, the Napa parking, you know? Because I don't want to see this winter come and have mound of dirt and runoff and everything else with it. So, are, are dollars budgeted for that or do we have to approve that expenditure?
It was my understanding from Chris, and again, this is Chris's.
I'm sorry, you said, okay, yes.
Chris's project, that it is going to be flattened and some sort of surfacing, I believe, sort of like what they did at the other party here. And that he will take care of the erosion control.
Perfect, okay.
And so that's already, that was included in the price that he brought to us and Sutton hasn't done it yet? Or is he going to come to us asking for more money?
He never said anything about having to come back and ask for more money.
I kind of remember it being flattened off and gravelled. And how was it? Same as the other one.
We sort of added that in when we did those contracts, as I recall.
Well, I remember him talking about graveling the, what might grow, but.
And even then, even then, you're not talking twenty thousand dollars to gravel.
No, no, no.
But I know it'll flatten it off, but, so that's my only thing is, we, we have enough money left, three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to do, finish little projects or do things. I just wanted to make sure. And I think, I think Martin has really put his best foot forward on making the museum better. He, you know, he, the, the membership, or not membership, the attendance there keeps going up. They're paying for more and more stuff. I think this is a good thing.
So, so Michelle, I, I just have a question for you. Wait, wait before I ask it. How come we have almost eighty pages of budget adjustment requests?
That was the, yeah, that was a, an attachment with the Excel and the whole.
I wanted that.
The new software, so I actually fixed mine, but.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, and it, it has been fixed on the website, but.
I was actually grateful because I started sitting down every day, a hundred and seventy-five packets. And it was a big packet. And I was like, what's all this?
And then my, my only other thought is if this, if, because you're saying it's going to be about sixty. Can we, can we say we will give you the thirty-five? But on contingent.
Contingent upon.
Contingent upon getting to that sixty thousand dollar goal. Can we ear tag that thirty-five?
Yep.
And say it's contingent upon, because I don't want it just to sit there and rot away.
Right. When does the, or the property owner need it out?
Right, when do they need it out by?
As soon as possible.
Okay.
Tomorrow. So that's Steve's.
We're, we're working on a new permission permit with Caltrans, so.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I agree. That's, I like to pay attention on everything else.
You know, or, yeah, I don't.
We'll partner with it if it, if it happens.
I just.
This budget, mom, you're worth your market for that.
Because we're up to fifty.
But it puts it in.
We're up to fifty.
Funds in the budget.
We have, we have fifteen.
Oh, you have fifteen?
Yeah, right.
Oh, that's great because the owner does give you that.
Right, okay, I didn't know the dollar, okay.
Okay, so that's great.
And I don't know if the foundation has money. I don't know, Martin's got some squirrel, I don't know if Martin's got some squirrel delay.
He's got somebody to go to.
He probably has a go-to person.
He might.
He does.
So, okay, so if he does, then let's do it.
Is that a motion or a public comment? Sam, any comment?
I've been trying to follow this back and forth for a complete video record. It's a mess. That's my comment, sorry.
Okay, see, no public comment.
I, I do have a comment, unless you're being facetious. If you're talking fifteen thousand dollars different over a historical building, do it.
Yeah.
Do it. Because a week from now, it might be gone.
Right.
Okay?
Yeah, and my only additional request is when we do do it, if we do do it, let's, um, do that research on the history and, and highlight that.
Yeah, some kind of plaque or whatever the house is and stuff, I agree.
The names that, you know, because we did lose a, a building in town when we didn't value the history there and I don't, I don't want that to happen.
Judith Marvin has already contributed her time preparing history.
Yeah, so, and I'm sure Martin will knock it out of the park with how that's presented at the museum.
Well, as I said, any sort of public outreach is, you know, some sort of PR just moving down the road would be wonderful, but I'm sure Martin, he's pretty amazing at that stuff. So I will make a motion then to pass Resolution 24-057.
Is that with or without the contingency?
Have the contingency?
With the contingency.
With the contingency.
You got to have the cash to do it.
Okay.
And I'm going to second that much.
Thank you. Shemante?
Aye.
Rolio?
Aye.
Hernan?
Aye.
Charada?
Aye.
Thank you. Sorry.
Just sitting there waiting.
Sorry.
I had no idea how that stood in.
Sorry.
I think I would.
You made me read all this stuff.
I'm surprised you didn't say something earlier.
You made me read all this stuff. I was trying to be a good, thankful person.
Amy, you're looking for staff direction about applications for micro enterprise community development block grants.
So now that we've asked for thirty-five thousand dollars, we are now going to ask if you would like us to charge you secure 1.5 million dollars in over-the-counter fees through community development block grant monies. These would be for micro enterprise, which is basically five employees or fewer, that size of a business. I listed some of the things you can do with the money. Commercial tenants to physically rehabilitate or upgrade a building, securing equipment to run a new business. The key here is to put people to work ultimately. And if that means somebody decides they want to start a business, you can train them to do it, you can help fund them to do it, you can help, we have the bill, building to help them do it. You can also do business retention and expansion, which I hadn't put in there, as well as training. If this all sounds familiar to you, it's because DAP did, in fact, we did secure money and DAP was going to pursue it. But there was a problem with having to do the underwriting. And so when Michelle and I talked to the, the grants person, she said, just make sure you budget for somebody to do that. Get a bank who's going to do the underwriting for you. Budget for it, we'll pay it to have somebody do that so that you don't have that problem again.
And who's, are you writing the grant?
Uh, Michelle and I could be writing it.
And then, and you're going to hire someone to administer it?
Correct.
Okay.
And that'd be in, in the grant, that it was accepted.
Yes, yes. And this is again, over the counter.
It's what, Amy, I'm sorry?
It's over the counter, which is why we're coming to you now. It means first come, first served.
Right, you want to get first in line.
We want to be first in line.
They're expecting it to open at the end of the month.
Oh, great, this is a perfect timing for us.
Sam, public comment?
Pardon?
Public comment?
I, I had to on the last one because I'm one of these guys that restore nineteen twenty-one steam locomotives back to operation. You got a good core building, take it.
Okay, so seeing no public comment on this item, um, do we have anyone that's willing to make a motion?
I think, I didn't direct it. Go for it, go get it.
Go ahead, please.
Absolutely.
Done.
All right. So we are on to item eleven, Steve, administration report.
Thank you, Mayor. I think I do, I. Okay. So, um, in my first two weeks here, I've tried to get up to speed, um, learning all the planning projects and going out and introducing myself to our, our water organization partners in the region. Met with all the park kids, heard their, their needs and their wants and, um, what I can do to help them for the time that I'm here. We had our water main break last week that I emailed you folks about and, uh, our crews are right on top of it. There was a boiled water notice for a couple of days and water came back, um, clear. I think on Sunday, it was supposed to come back on Saturday, but there was a one-day delay because of some problem with the lab, the external independent lab that we use. So that boiled water notice was lifted on Sunday. Last Thursday, I went to the planning commission meeting and just introduced myself as the interim city manager so they know, uh, who I am. And I do want to thank Amy. She has done a little disappointed more than well, disappointed about the playground delay. Because we told you folks that it was going to start this week. I do want to compliment Amy on, she was right on top of it and just firing off the emails that needed to be, um, sent to those that were responsible for the delay. Very, um. Um, intentionally worded with our expectations and how this is not acceptable. So she did a great job dealing with that and I just want to say thank her. Thank you to her for that. And, uh, that's about it. That's all I have.
Well, I would just like to say thank you. I think that you have done a wonderful job in the last two weeks. You're, um, very, uh, you're proving that you have communication skills. I feel that we're all being, um, kept up to date as what's going on and I just want to thank you from, from these personnel.
Thank you. You'll never know what's in front of you.
Moving on, item twelve is a council report.
Um, I haven't really attended anything, but I do want to mention that the Bear Valley Music Festival kicks off this Friday on the nineteenth. With, uh, popular bands this weekend. It's like Leonard Skinner cover and then George Michael tribute and a Parrot Head thing on Sunday. So classical music moves in on Thursday of next week with a disco inferna with the symphony. So if you've not enjoyed our Bear Valley Music Festival symphony, I would highly recommend it. It's a sixty-five member orchestra from all over the United States and they come in and some of them have been coming for fifty years, so. Um, so that's where I'll be until August four.
I don't have anything, I didn't go to any of them the last few weeks. It was pretty, it was boring, but.
I'll let you do LAFCO. Um, I was, I attended the all hazards meeting with Amy and I, I do need to stay because I left my notes on, I apologize. And we're wrapping up the study and, uh, we'll see a final draft in August and I, my assumption is we'll present it. There were two items left. Chief Ellis was going to work on a, a section and I think we're not going to do that, correct, Amy?
Correct.
And then it was all about heritage roads and I asked Amy what that was. And we have some, one way, we have some very narrow roads that we were going to do some outreach to figure out whether or not we can make it safer to traverse, et cetera. But I think that's going to be tabled.
We're going to do a policy.
We're going to do a policy.
And have you thumbs up, ever thumbs down it? Because it's going to take quite some time to do the outreach.
And, you know, I, I've kind of half joked about all hazards. I appreciate your work on it, Amy. It's, it's one of those committees that are, it's tough to get up to speed because everybody knows what they're talking about. And I keep thinking, what the heck are they talking about? But, um, I, I have appreciated sitting on that. Tomorrow, CPPA, um, we are doing a, a, a budget. We're going to pass a budget that's going to include a two percent decrease. I'm sure you guys are going to let me vote for that. Claudia Davis and Mike Johnson are going to be the new at-large representatives. And, um, they're going to continue with the, the assistance program. It's a mandate from Western Power Agency to have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars set aside for a program, uh, light, like, um, pro, projects that reduce the use of electricity. Just like we did with the parking lot and applied, so.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, um, and then last thing on the agenda is Mike Minky, Minkler is the new chair and he asked for some documentation, the history of, of, of the JPA. You know, the allocation from the feds in nineteen sixty-eight to give us first priority along with Twomey County when the dam was put, you know, first financed. So, but I think the good news is, at least for next year, there's going to be two cent a kilowatt decrease and that's going to help. And then I'll let Madam Chair talk about LAFCO last night. It was a great meeting.
Yeah, we attended LAFCO last night. Not a lot happened, not a lot, a lot of discussion, not a lot of progress. Um, one of the things they are working on and John Benoit, uh, mentioned is that there's a, it's the City of Angels term for their MSR and their Sphere of Influence Study. It's been five years roughly. So Steve, I need to get you in contact with him because he does need some information. Rebecca had touched on it and started it, I don't know how far she got, and he doesn't need much. I mean, it's a certain amount of information that just needs to be provided and I think you could gather that information and then get it to him so he can start plugging that in and, um, putting it into his, his MSR. Regarding the Sphere of Influence, he, that's a little bit more of a heavy lift and I, I don't know how far we're going to get on that, but we can start with the MSR. So I'll be getting you in contact with that. And that's the only other meeting that I think I've attended. Um, I would like to, um, discuss an issue, a personal issue on my, my own. There's some rumors that are going around that seem to be about my living situation. And for the record, I would like to go on record tonight saying that my primary residence is and has always been the same. It's on Gardner Lane, that is my primary residence. Um, if any member of the public has any questions about this, they can reach out to City Hall, talk to Doug, he's prepared to respond on this issue. Having said that, I do want to also go public and let the, the folks here know that I will not be seeking reelection. Um, I've made that decision and I will fulfill my original term, but I'm not going to seek reelection. I've thoroughly enjoyed being here, I've totally enjoyed being a city representative, I value our time, I think we made a lot of accomplishments. Um, and I would like to, I still have a lot of passion and, and love with the City of Angels and I'm going to try to align with the city in, in other ways maybe and following suitable, who knows what I'll do in the future? But for right now, it's not going to be City of Angels anymore. It's my public statement. Um, we're moving on to item thirteen, calendar.
Calendar, which is up on the board for you. Calendar, which is up on the board for you. Mike, you mentioned C P P A tomorrow.
Right.
C O G, which is tax, that canceled, that was one that Rebecca did. The I R W M A, I need to check with Chris to make sure that he's going to attend. FERC, I sent it out earlier, is on Thursday, it's at one P M. And then you have the U W P A on the twenty-third. Michelle, and I believe Steve, are going to go to the Fire J P A meeting on the twenty-fourth. And then we're moving into August. So, council meeting, C O G, we.
Am I covering C O G? I think I, I think she.
For August?
Yes.
All financials are.
I wanna say is it all.
I think she did ask you. Just check with her again.
Okay. We're setting up, we're setting up demos because we're looking at moving to a new financial system.
Oh, Tyler is a different.
So Tyler's a demo, we have Central Square's a demo, and then Accu Fund's a demo. So we're looking forward to that. And then.
What is that for, it's the line?
For our new financial system.
No more Ever.
No more Spring Break.
Break, yeah.
No. So, yeah. This is something that we definitely need to do. We're looking at adding like timekeeping, adding a lot more that will be available from one of these vendors.
Is it, do they work with mobile devices for the timekeeping? Oh, that's brilliant, brilliant.
Yes. Uh huh. Got a lot of lists going as to what we're looking for, and what we really need for the city. So, yeah.
Item fourteen, future agenda items.
I'll start.
Mike, why don't you start?
I, I'd like just Steve to look at, you know, and just in a, as a discussion item, master plan for our facilities.
Oh, yeah.
You know, so, you know, what, what do we envision, and what do we think? You know, we have a vacant office now, and what can we do with that building? And so, I, I'd like that. I'd like us also to, to come up with an emergency response, and not wait for the county, so that, God forbid, we have to open up cooling stations, or something happens. You know, are we gonna, do we appoint one of our, you know, the fire chief, or the, or Chief Ellis, to take a lead on that? Just a kind of a discussion, and, and maybe some direction. I, I'd also like us to talk about park maintenance. You know, this park is gonna be done in three hundred and three days, and.
Four, four.
Three hundred and four. And, you know, what are, who's gonna maintain it? How are we gonna do that? Do we need additional staffing? You know, can a foundation step in? What, what are our thoughts about that? So that, when we build it, they will come and we will maintain. And the last thing I have, and my wife pointed this out to me, as I was driving in the wrong way, that there's a, a sign that says, do not enter, as you enter the parking lot from this end, to view the creek park, that parking lot along the creek, and it's just a, a steel sign. And I think we need to look at it and, and refurbish it or replace it, because I think it says, do not enter. That's what Maria told me. I was taking a shortcut. Oh, you can get a ticket, 'cause you're city council, you can take a ticket. But I think it's supposed to say, do not enter, but it doesn't say that any longer. The, the red paint is, has been worn off.
Where is that at?
It's just.
Across the street.
Across the street.
Across the street from the firehouse.
Yeah, a little bit further down.
What does it say right now?
I think it says. I think.
Maria's got better eyes than him. It could be a nice and bright sign.
Yeah, I need a bright sign.
I need to go look at it. I walk by it all the time.
So, and that's all I have.
Alvin?
I had spaces, but he nailed it, so he, yeah.
Yeah, but that's, it'd be a good conversation.
Did you talk about it a lot?
I know, I had a space audit, or whatever that is. We talked about that.
Space audit assessment.
Yeah, that needs a, space needs assessment, that's, that's better. Space audit sounds something I'm.
Audit.
And he and I also talked about emergency response plans, so if we have one, 'cause I think there is one that exists, it's just maybe dusting it off, and making it prominent. And then the other thing was a plan for hiring our city administrator.
Yep.
Oh, good idea.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We gonna handle that internally, or go out with someone?
That's, two of those items, I think Steve and I have already kinda touched on in our meeting last week, of course, the, the recruitment. And with the emergency response, I agree. We have one, we, we do need to pick it up and dust it off, like you said, with the last cooling stations. I think Steve and I talked, as well as Chief Robo and I talked, we need to have a better understanding of what type of emergency constitutes this to happen. And what type, you know, it's not always all hands on deck. If it's a county-wide emergency, then it's different than if it's just a city emergency. And so it's not always the same person, the same people that get into play. And I don't, I don't know that it, it goes into those types of scenarios. It seems to be kinda cookie cutter, but I could be wrong. So, yeah, it's a great idea to discuss.
And it doesn't mean we don't coordinate with the county, but it means that we're sitting, we should be able to protect our own.
We're only sitting on our own, right?
And that way.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you know, and the only other thing I would like to touch on is, in addition to what Mike mentioned with park maintenance, is maybe a high-level public works of what's going on for the rest of what we have left of a construction season. Are they concentrating on wrapping things up? Are they concentrating on, I mean, I know we're always gonna have the water breaks, but are they concentrating on any final construction opportunities, road work, or is it all just putting out fires, so to speak?
We used to get a monthly update from each of the department heads through Rebecca. It was like News and Notes, or something she used to call it. So I don't know if you could maybe just, and it doesn't have to be extensive, I don't, you know, it just, but something that kinda updates us on what each department's been working on the last month. Right?